I'll call this regular council meeting to Graham and Anne, being at the community center on November the 2nd, 2020, at 7:30 PM. I'll call it to order, and for prayer, we have Deputy Mayor Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let us pray. Lord, we're thankful that we live in the free and democratic society that we have, Lord God. And thank you, Lord God, that our opinions do matter. Everyone's opinions matter, Lord God, and we pray that, Lord, that we may pay attention, Lord, in fact, you give each of us two ears and two eyes, but only one mouth, Lord. So that means we're supposed to take in a lot more than we're supposed to say. And Lord God, like Solomon of old, we pray for wisdom to lead the people. And we ask in Jesus' wonderful name, amen.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Looking back since March, Graham and Anne has been very lucky with no known cases of COVID-19. That has happened because of our leaders and the standards that they have announced that will help keep us safe. Nobody likes to wear a mask or the two-meter distancing, but let's keep this going to protect ourselves and others. The weather is turning fallish and windy for the start of our lobster season. In LF Area 38, let's hope for a safe and prosperous season for the fishermen. We are now approaching Remembrance Day, November the 11th. It will be at the Senatath in Grand Harbour by the fire department with the church service at the Emmanuel Church. Let's remember our veterans all year long, not only on Remembrance Day. I'd like to thank the people who put the banners back up this year. They look great being around in other places in the province. I think we could round ours as number one. And another thing, that masks are to be worn on the ferry at all times. So let's try to obey that and see if we can keep a clean record with COVID-19. Disclosure of conflict of interest. The adoption of the minutes of October the 5th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt the minutes of October the 5th, 2020?
You heard the motion by Councilor Chaney and a seconder by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The adoption of the minutes, additions to the agenda. I have an addition for closed session financial community planning. That came from the staff, so.
Would that be under new business, Mr. Mayor?
Sixteen-two.
Okay, okay, closed session then. Well, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to add that item to the additional items?
Your motion by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon, do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Morse, question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have the RCMP report, and with the masked RCMP, I'll take it to be Constable Kelsey Roberts.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Calls for service in October 2020 are as follows. Two assault, six mischief, one breach of peace, one fraud, four operation while impaired, one causing a disturbance, one uttering threat, two criminal harassment, one harassing communications, one taking motor vehicle without consent, one flight from peace officer, one false alarm, four quarantine act, two other provincial, one suspicious person, two assistance to general public, one assistance to Canadian federal agency. Also, one check stop, three traffic collisions involving property damage, one other moving traffic, one other non-moving traffic, one speeding, one off-road vehicle act, and one motor vehicle act, other activities, for a total of forty-one.
Do you have any questions for Constable Roberts? That must mean you're doing a good job.
Halloween night, pretty quiet?
Halloween night was pretty quiet. I didn't work myself, but the member who was on shift, there was no issues Halloween night.
What's the difference between taking a motor vehicle without permission and stealing?
There's a slight difference, or two different charges with the criminal code. They do have theft of a motor vehicle. It's just, it's just a different charge, taking, like, just taking it without the consent of the owner. An example would be, say, someone living in the residence took the keys without the owner's permission, where theft of a motor vehicle would be just a little different with someone actually coming in and stealing the vehicle. Essentially, they're, essentially, they're the same, but it's two different charges in the criminal code.
I assume one would be felony and another one would be, basically?
They're both dual offense procedures. The penalties would be different in court. I'd have to look up and, and see the actual penalties, but generally, theft of a motor vehicle will carry the harsher penalty in court.
Okay, and thank you.
Thank you.
Under all building, is the building by law an update by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, nothing much to report. Unfortunately, this is kind of my haymaking time, October, November, so I didn't have an opportunity to meet with Council and Man Sir Young, as the Council had expressed an interest to do last month. So hopefully, we can maybe get that done in the month of November. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now we have the ten-minute open session. Number ten is delegation or special speakers, Information Council on Oral Hygienist and for Nursing Home Dentist Recruitment, Samantha McKenzie-Granger.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Granger and Council. From 1981 until the summer of 2020, Graham and Anne has had the privilege of having Dr. Van Wurden reside in practice on the island as our dentist. Having a local dentist attributed to supporting local business made a trip off the island unnecessary and in turn saved both time and money. In an economy where almost every store is looking for employees, having our healthcare be directly on the island contributed to less sick days needed. So Dr. Wurden's retirement came after two years of trying to sell his business and unfortunately wasn't able to attract a dentist to come to the island and take over his clinic. This is not an unheard of event for Graham and Anne to have a difficult time finding healthcare providers. We've addressed this phenomenon in regards to our doctors, and I believe the Health Committee is still an active part of council, with members being our mayor, deputy mayor, Councilor Fitzsimmons, and Councilor Morse. So I would like to offer some information to our council, though, about the importance of access to a dentist, how rurality acts as a deterrent to those in the dental profession, financial strategies our island may consider, as well as the possible solutions in the interim. In the last several years, more information keeps being discovered that proves dental health directly correlates to overall physical health. The Mayo Clinic has linked poor oral health to endocarditis, which is an infection in the lining of the heart, cardiovascular disease, and even complications with pregnancy and low birth weight. So furthermore, there are conditions that can affect oral health, such as diabetes, osteoporosis, certain cancers, and certain medications. This isn't even delving into a fraction of the possible complications that can arise, but gives an overarching idea of the importance of oral health. Dentists are specialized doctors. They're not a separate entity from the healthcare system, and that needs to be recognized from all parts of government that addresses its citizens' health. Even though they're not a part of Medicare, accessibility to dental care is just as important as availability to one's family doctor. And I'd also like to point out that numerous groups are vying for Medicare to include dental care, and some countries have already realized its importance and allowed it under their medical system, including the UK's NHS. So one enormous concern that I looked at was ensuring that our seniors have dental care. Our island has had the privilege of having the Graham and Anne Nursing Home. This is a facility that has its twenty-nine beds and one respite bed to allow men and women who have been the backbone of Graham and Anne the respect and dignity to spend their twilight years with their family and loved ones. It's something I want to remind everyone that is such a valuable resource, because many communities on the mainland don't have this. Their residents are shipped off to another community that's as close as possible. So I had the opportunity to speak with Heather Bass, who's the Director of Nursing at the Graham and Anne Nursing Home, and her passion and dedication to provide the best overall care to our residents is beyond reproach. She said, "The Graham and Anne Nursing Home is waiting to see if someone will be a dentist on the island, but currently, the residents there are 100% without dental care. Some of the residents do have the ability to go away for the day if necessary with a family member, however, the strain of a twelve-hour day is exhausting. There are other residents who are bedridden or for other reasons are unable to get away. And I do have to address COVID, because in asking a resident of the nursing home to seek care off-island, there's an immediately, there's immediately an increased risk of bringing COVID into a home where every resident is vulnerable. The Graham and Anne Nursing Home Foundation felt dental care was so important that they created a room in the new facility and provided a dental chair so residents wouldn't be displaced when having checkups. Without dental care, the entire part of a resident's health is excluded. Heather touched base on a condition called dysphagia. You'll have to forgive me for simplifying this, but it's basically a condition where a person's speech and mouth stops working properly, and it's, it is common. The dentists can address this, because the reality is that inhaled food particles can lead to choking, and they can even lead to pneumonia. Pain and trouble chewing can easily lead to malnutrition. And basically, that's a horrible thing to think of when our grandparents, our family, are in the nursing home, that they could get sick from something that's so easily preventable. I believe that Graham and Anne has a responsibility to its seniors and has always gone beyond the provincial expectation of what care entails. The staff at the nursing home are such an example of the expectation to provide respect, dignity, compassion, and care. Losing part of that care is certainly a concern, and as an island, we have never taken a stance of giving the problem to someone else to solve. We've always seen that community come together to help others, and even if dental care ends up looking different, we need to find a solution to continue keeping the services we have available on the island. In the short term, ensuring those that can't go away, who need help with the trip, and who because of COVID are being dissuaded from travel, having a dental care, having any available dental care here would be a huge start. And the reality is that with rural living comes a burden of attracting specialized services. In Canada, only about 2% of dental clinics fail. So if you compare that to other professional services or scientific services, it has about a 15% failure rate. So dental clinics are doing pretty good. And I do believe it's important to understand the perception that causes barriers to rural practices and how we can combat those stereotypes. So the Journal of Canadian Dental Associations did a qualitative analysis to ascertain why dentists didn't practice rurally. I actually, I really liked that study, so I printed it out and gave it to all the councilors and Mr. Mayor. The benefits of the qualitative study is that in peer-reviewed research, one gets an in-depth look at the subject. It uses a different measure for collecting information and focuses on learning about the person in the study. So while there's less participants, the information takes longer to get, and it's usually a more well-rounded study combined with quantitative data. So the reasons why people didn't consider practicing in rural areas were the students' awareness of oral healthcare in rural areas. So students were taught about low-income dentistry in university, but they weren't taught about the barriers to people in rural areas and how to help solve that problem. So there was also the image of rurality. So that was both a positive and a negative, the image of rural dental practices and just other perceived barriers. So the journal also set out factors that contributed to enabling a rural dental practice. So the positives are rural living is associated with a slower-paced lifestyle and a more family-oriented lifestyle. I think we can all agree that Graham and Anne is a little bit slower, slower lifestyle, and it is more family-oriented. And especially appealing was the autonomy of owning one's own clinic, being responsible for one's own hours, and being one's own boss. Now, the barriers include isolation, fearing the unknown, a lack of infrastructure and resources, as well as a lack of professional support. I'd strongly argue that with careful promotion and highlighting our accessibility to the mainland, the resources that we do have here, and that we are willing to help our healthcare providers thrive here, we have a strong chance of attracting a dentist to the island. I also believe that this study actually translates into other sectors as well. The stereotype that rural living is a detriment to success is found in any industry, and knowing about it gives us a chance to combat it. So with the attached study, it's extremely relevant because of the New Brunswick's population growth strategy. So that addresses the need for new people to come to our province. We're losing people faster than they're settling here. And in 2016, according to the census, we did see a minor increase on Graham and Anne to our population. It was about 1%, I believe. But death and moving to other provinces are key factors in why our province is losing people rapidly. So our community's struggle to attract and retain necessary professionals is not abnormal in New Brunswick. So I believe that Graham and Anne needs to latch on to our province's population growth strategy and find ways to utilize it to our benefit. How do we make Graham and Anne an attractive place for future New Brunswick residences? Residents, and how do we begin to popularize our unique rural setting? When I say unique rural setting, what I'm referring to is the amount of facilities and infrastructure that we already have available. So we have four doctors, an emergency room, a hospital that provides an amazing array of services from blood work to x-rays. We have a school with an auditorium, a double gym, a public library, a tech lab, shop access. We have high-speed internet now, along with Bell, a hockey arena, a boys' and girls' club, grocery store. We have documented maintenance trail systems, restaurants, a curling ring, and numerous programs to volunteer with, from the Rotary to the Legion. We're unique, that all this is at our fingertips. And frankly, it's really easy to forget that our version of rural is abnormal, but it works to our benefit if we want to promote our island. We've also had the opportunity to see other communities begin to implement growth strategies in numerous ways. So in PEI, there was a plan to provide new residents with farmland on the condition that they used it. And I actually spoke to Ken Stanek today, who's the mayor of Macadam, and they had done a dollar plot program where they offered sixteen plots for a dollar to bring in new residents, and it actually worked. They had 150 people in the last, I think he said, four years come to Macadam. So obviously, these are grand-os ideas, and they don't correlate directly to Graham and Anne needs a dentist. But in losing services, especially in key healthcare, are we seeing our island's services slide? The question becomes, what other services are we actually willing to lose? So finances are going to be a concern. So the average salary for a dentist is about 8% lower than the national average in Canada. And in Section 1, it shows that the Canadian average is $133,238. In New Brunswick, it's about $115,415 a year. And I actually think that number is advantageous to knowing what we need to offer if we were to consider enticing a dentist to come here. Now, $17,000 is a significant number, but in Section 2, you'll see that housing is significantly lower in New Brunswick compared to the rest of Canada. So if we were to consider housing stipend or anything like that, we have an advantage there. Now, I did make a note in Section 3 about taxation, because New Brunswick does have high taxes, and that can be a perceived barrier. Unfortunately, it's not something we can directly change, but it is something I feel council could consider addressing as a possible barrier and lobby towards other members of government within New Brunswick. So the Canadian Dental Association, or CDA, has done studies on the debt load that dentists incur in school. It takes about eight years to become a dentist, four years of undergrad, four years of dental school. For dental school alone, the average debt incurred is about $24,000 to $26,000 per year. Forty-nine percent of the overall students interviewed by the CDA stated they're going to increase their debt further to continue their education. Now, I looked into the cost of buying what's needed for a clinic, because I wanted to be thorough. The overheads approximately, if you were $150,000 to half a million dollars. So it is expensive to start a dentist's practice, and as Dr. Wurden's equipment has been sold off after two years and his office has been converted into housing, I'm wondering if we need to look at investing or creating a space for a dentist to practice. I believe we'd also have to address housing as a possible area to create a stipend. We don't really have any rental availability here. We have started seeing a trend, though, in companies creating living spaces for their employees because of a lack of availability, so maybe that's something we can consider. When I spoke to Dr. Wurden, he explained that when he moved here, the provincial government had a plan where they helped with tuition for dental students if they went to an underserved area. Now, this is something that's still going on in Newfoundland, and it's actually really successful. I think that we need to look into the programs and funding that may be available, and I did speak with the Honorable Andrea Anderson-Mason about this. She didn't have any information offhand, but she is concerned about the lack of availability for some of her residents to get dental care and the loss of a vital service. We're going to be in touch next week to see if we can find out anything. So I also spoke to the Saint Andrews Town Clerk, because they're in the same position we are. They lost their dentist this summer as well, he retired. Now, they mentioned that they included an area to be used as a dental clinic in their new wellness center. So the town, as it's without a dentist, has been advertising, currently only in New Brunswick, but they are looking at branching out into Ontario and Quebec. And in advertising for a dentist, a dental recruiter may want to be considered. It's something that, in the CDA, a lot of dentist, dental students mention that they met with a recruiter to find out where they would be best be placed. So it also gives feedback on what we can offer. So obviously, this is all cost-dependent, and it needs to be considered as something council and the Health Committee would want to invest their time into. So financial incentives throughout the board, everybody said financial incentives were going to be important to attract a dentist to a rural location. One argument that I've really appreciated hearing, though, is that the government doesn't get involved in private business, and this isn't council's purview. And I'm going to say that Brunswick Square in St. John has just asked the city for financial assistance, and we hear at larger scales about corporate bailouts, tax breaks given to some companies. My stance is that private industry, is that this isn't private industry getting overrun by the government. That would definitely be a concern, but this is a concern council looking out for its citizens' health by providing incentives for a dentist to move to the island. In this case, maybe we need to look at a dentist as a community service with In this case, maybe we need to look at a dentist as a community service within a private business and find out how our municipal government can create a merger of sorts. So in the interim, because the reality is, is that no matter what, this is going to take time. I spoke to Eliza Metcalf, and she's a dental hygienist with a mobile clinic in Moncton, so she's not a dentist. She deals with preventative care, and her passion is especially with seniors. We had amazing conversation, and she's willing to entertain the idea of coming to the island with her mobile clinic periodically until we get a dentist on the island. Obviously, I can't promise this is going to happen, but I do believe our council needs to look at alternatives and at very least provide preventative measures for people who are unable to travel away. And I believe it's fair to say that our island's dental services have been missed. I want to take a moment to thank Van for the years that he gave our island. He provided such an essential service, and I just want to wish him and Donna a happy retirement. So in conclusion, I'd like to ask council to consider making it a priority to recruit a dentist to our island by way of advertising and consider incentivizing on the same level as our doctors. At very least, I'd implore council to consider asking its citizens if dental care is important enough to invest some of the island's tax dollars on a publicity at the next election. I believe that Graham and Anne is capable of sustaining the same services that have positively promoted our island's quality of life for so many years. With these services, although these services may ultimately look different than before, we are capable of finding solutions, solving problems, and overcoming obstacles. We've seen other communities begin to shrink, and we've seen services decline in these areas. And which comes first, decline in people or in service? It becomes a cycle that we don't want to see happen here. And frankly, I don't believe it will, but to entertain the idea of waiting for a service while we have ways to promote ourselves, and we have so many attributes to promote, really resolves nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. King?
This is a presentation, you can ask questions of the presenter.
Sure.
Of course.
Samantha?
Yep.
Regarding the lady in Moncton?
Yes.
With the mobile clinic?
Yep.
Did you say she was or was not a dentist?
She's a mobile hygienist, so while she can't do extractions and surgeries, she can do teeth cleaning. She has care for cavities so that somebody can extend the time that they need to get to a dentist.
Right.
So I'm, she's basically the person that you'd see before the dentist.
So she would fit in good with the nursing home residents then possibly?
I believe that she'd be a good alternative. I don't, I believe that we do need a dentist. I don't think that the service is going to look the same unless we were able to attract a dentist directly to the island.
And I agree.
But I think that we do need to start looking at alternatives.
You didn't, I suppose, in the mobile clinic, but in the nursing home, you mentioned there was a room with dental care in it?
There is. The Graham and Anne Nursing Home Foundation felt that dental care was extremely important, and they would have Van come in once in a while and just help the residents, because one of the things that you're looking at is conditions like Alzheimer's, where you can't take your family member away for the day.
Right.
And in a case like that, if somebody, even if they don't have teeth, dentists aren't just dealing with the tooth itself, it's dealing with gums, the tongue, abscesses, things like that. And it's incredibly important for them to be able to have that proper oral care. No problem.
Any other questions? Number 11, one, was a letter to the Minister of Transportation, the Honorable Jill Green. Says, "Dear Madam, on behalf of the Graham and Anne Village Council, congratulations on your appointment as Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure. I'm reaching out to you today to inquire on the letter sent April 22, 2020, to the Office of the Honorable Bill Oliver requesting, one, a single trip on New Year's Day for the Graham and Anne ferry on January 1, 2021. And, two, a dialogue between council, your department, Coastal Transport, to formulate a plan prior to the next refit of the Graham and Anne adventure. Perhaps our letter was missed, or reply was lost during the COVID-19 shutdown. Council looks forward to working with you in the future. Yours truly, Dennis Green, Mayor."
Mr. Mayor, I had sent an email to Ian as well with DTI. I heard back from him Friday, I think, that they were working towards the New Year's trip, so hopefully we'll have some.
New Business, 12-1 is the Santa Claus Parade, Deputy Mayor Wayne Sturgeon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I had an interesting question from Acting Mayor of St. George on regards to the Santa Claus Parade, what we were going to do. And to be honest with you, I'd never have given it any much thought. I had circulated that email to other members of council. And I did inquire of our staff, because both ladies, at least both ladies at one time was involved with it at one time, and listen, I believe that you still are, and see what was going to be done. Listen, I did have a little bit of discussion, but maybe if we did, if they did do it, it would be maybe extending the route, and the whole idea would be to, so that everybody's not so concentrated, I guess, that's basically kind of the thing.
The nursing home.
Yep. Yes, and the nursing home can't come in as well. And first off, I think we can all agree, COVID has a way of changing things dramatically overnight, you know, so, but in the meanwhile, do we, are we still interested in a Santa Claus parade? And do we think it can be held safely? And also, I very much value Treasure Calder's opinion, and I'm sure they've had some discussion on this.
We have, and we have some people registered, but everyone that registers, we've gotten an honorary base. If it doesn't happen, we know why not. There'll be a penalty afterwards. Up to you guys, and we know that we might not be able to.
Yeah.
You know, this is the route, the route for people to stay so.
Yeah.
Go by the nursing home.
Myself personally, I think we all are in the mood of any recreation whatsoever, within, done safely, of course. And things might dramatically change between now and early December, but if we're going to, you know, it takes time for a pair. We've had some fantastic floats and preparations done over the years, so we certainly will want to, we don't want, we want to give people as much time as possible if we're going to proceed. And of course, we value anybody's input here on council, any thoughts that they may have, so.
I think our parade is maybe a little bit different than in a city where you have crowds that gather ahead of time to get their spot on the route. I mean, here, you mostly see people either in their cars, or they get out of the cars as the parade is approaching, so you don't have the large groups of people standing around for hours in close proximity. So I think that, you know, that does play a little bit better towards us being able to have a safe parade, especially with the extended route. Would be my opinion.
And of course, if people are going to be gathered on a float, I would assume masks would be necessary, I would, I would think so.
I'm assuming, unless they're like...
So that might be something that might want to be put out there, I guess.
I guess, and I feel like everyone, yeah, like, wants to be that family.
Yes.
So if it was a family, would they need to, like?
I, 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 I'm not the provincial expert, but it would, it would make sense to me that if you keep it within your family bubble, everything would be good, I would think. Anyway, it's just something to consider, that's all.
But masks aren't required outside at this point, are they?
Campbell in the air, but...
I'm assuming if we're back to Orange, we're not going to be doing any sort of parade.
But the two-meter distancing is still inside or outside. I mean, that's required, so.
I know on the ferry, if they're outside, they don't need the mask.
Okay, good.
Or it was, it was that way.
So I guess basically, does anybody have any concerns or objections about having one?
Not at all, for me.
Well, I think we should be looking at the organizers to see if they feel that it's...
We just thought when Wayne and I talked, we thought we should see what you guys thought. We were not going to do anything. Afterwards, we thought Wayne adjusted lining up here in the gravel area, because it's bigger than around the end compared to all, which is a good idea.
And then, once we get to where we're stopping, everyone is just going to disperse, like, go home, so that we know gathering after, like, once we get where we're going. But we understand if we can't, like, we know.
Where's the destination, the end of the route?
Well, we just, we kind of just want to go by the nursing home, and it's a long walk, and we have a lot of walkers registered, so we ordered medals if they want to do it. It's five and a half, six and a half kilometers from the Anglican Church, five and a half from here. We thought we could have a designated float. They probably had to wear masks if they want to hop on at the Independent, or if they want to, it's always...
Yeah, because that's a long stretch.
It's a long walk.
Yes.
But we'd like to go by the nursing home, but we don't have to, like...
I think, I think that's a good plan to go by the nursing home.
Just because they can't come out. They usually put their van in it or sit in it somewhere.
It's also maybe a good place where to stop, because they have a big area there.
It's a turn.
Because that's the challenge, right?
We thought if we stopped there, if we stopped right at the back road, if we could just go home, like, just go by and then go home.
Yeah.
Are they on the back road, or just...
It would always be nice if you could go up around the nursing homes so that they had a really good view of the floats.
Sure.
And I've called Joanne a few times to ask her that. Someone thought we'd catch up. I think I was talking to Rob about it, going in under the road. I'm going to, I'm going to call Joanne again and see.
Well, you don't have to go in under that, do you?
Well, they wanted to put the float in.
Like, if we turned and came out, but we weren't, I wasn't, I haven't been there very often.
Well, up where Kenny's old gradus is a good turning place now.
That's where we thought we'd stop, stop and turn, or go down the back road, or just go home.
We only got your committees, your organizations.
Okay. I've called Joanne twice, but she's a busy lady to catch, so I'll try and...
Everybody is fine with that, or whatever, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's enough parking spots, places along the road. Like, basically, you've only got Woodwards Cove.
Yeah. Yeah, we, this route's not set in stone, I'm not sure what to do.
Yeah, I'm just...
That's what we thought, the Anglican Church.
Yeah.
They have the whole harbor, and it's such a long walk, but people know how, so we're not sure what to do.
Yeah. There's so many good parking spots between here and the school.
Yeah, here.
You know?
Woodwards Cove, they always claim they're being left out, so now we're giving them a double whammy.
I'm just worried about parking spots, though, I don't see that many.
Yeah, we kind of thought of that, thought of a few, but...
There's so much in between, like, even to get to Woodwards Cove.
I know, it's a lot of woods.
But, I mean...
These are different times, so we have to do things differently, unfortunately.
And we're good with whatever and whatever route.
But we have put out some feelers.
Yep, and we, we can change it, like, we have a few floats and a lot of walkers registered.
Anyway, I guess that's what, that's one of all the agenda, just kind of keep us all in the loop, I guess, and hear any good suggestions someone might have, so.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't, well, I don't think so, but, just, is there, is not a committee per se or anything, or is that just...
There's no, just a few of us that just get together and, you know, talk about things and get things ordered, but we haven't, just word Roger has appeared so far.
I think the only thing we'd need a motion for is if we said we don't want to do it, I would, I would think, so. So if that's, if no one's interested in doing that, then we just go as is, I'm saying.
Unless something changes, yeah.
Of course, of course, we've got to follow provincial mandate.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, there's your word. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
12-2 is support for the Woodwards Cove Harbor. Counselor Morris to speak.
Thank you. Several of you, I think, attended the open house that the Harbor Authority had back in September, looking at the concept for a potential new harbor at Woodwards Cove. This would alleviate some of the overcrowding at the harbors at both Ingles Head and North Head. The Harbor Authority is working with the Fish Farmers Association, the GMFA, and other parties to put forward a proposal to ACOA for funding to do the engineering, and I think a good portion of the environmental at this point would be included in that. And we are looking for letters of community support, and I said I would come here and ask if the village would create a letter of support for that proposal. So that's what I'm doing. Quick and easy.
I assume you're making that a motion?
And yes, I'll make the motion.
I didn't want to pick the words of the mayor's vote, but...
You heard the motion by Counselor Morris, do we have a second there?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Counselor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 12-3 is asset manager report, C.A.O. MacPherson to speak.
A few notes here. The asset management report was mandated by the senior levels of government. I think New Brunswick is probably the last one to get on with the asset management plan. I think the concept of the asset management is for your infrastructure, for sewage, water, that type of thing, and your other assets. This has been going on for two years. The report is submitted here in mid-September. It's 150 pages long. The highlights of the, of the report, the assets of the village of Graham and Anne The assets, 92% of this sum is facilities, 2% is vehicles, and six miscellaneous. The two worst assets the village has is the airport runway and the Victoria Park pool. The, this is probably the first of, I think it's about a five-step program that the government is involved with for the community to get in line. This is all without, through, without the province. The cost of the report was $24,900. We have 80% of that cost was a grant from the federal Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And the other 20%, we come out of our gas tax fund. So this is, like I say, this is the first step of getting a plan to manage the assets that the village have. What it does is save how long the asset has life, if it needs any construction and renovations, that type of thing. They did, they did everything out at Swallow Tail, the complex here, everywhere, so it was, was quite comprehensive. So for us to get the money back, council has to authorize that you accept the report that's submitted. I have five copies coming, but you can look it over, but it's pretty hard reading to Any questions?
Wasn't that asset management report mandated? Mandated? Wasn't that report mandated by the province?
Yeah, they, if, if, if we didn't get involved with it, they would cut us off of the gas tax fund.
Yeah.
And under other grants and such in the future as well, because in order to get any monies from the federal or provincial government, you had to have one put together.
Yeah, well, the people that come here, they were engineers, they just, they would just want to go around and look at it. And a lot of our assets are quite old, you know, Swallow Tail's 160 years, business centers... years, uh, business centers, well over a hundred. Uh, but going through, uh, the, uh, the report, uh, all our assets are at least fair, so they're, you know, they've been well looked after over the years, and, uh, there is a plan on there, so you, you can, in future, future budget that you could say, you know, if you want to, well, one of them, one of the things there they say is Swallow Tail needs to be, uh, painted. Well, some of that could be SKA or, you know, Swallow Tail Keeper Society, they have done that up until this time, and same thing with, uh, Swallow Tail. They even say that, you know, the gutters here, uh, the ice is broken up two, three years ago, that, you know, they, that should be repaired, that type of thing. They, uh, they did very concise, uh, report on, on the asset, so, and they enjoyed the scene right now.
So, C.A.O. McPherson, we need a motion then that accept the contents of the Grand Manan Asset Management.
Yes, please.
Final report. Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the contents of the Grand Manan Asset Management Final Report, twenty twenty is presented.
You heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Moses Sturgeon, do we have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Chaney. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next thing, it's twelve four is the library surface run, and it says Mayor Green to address, but I've asked Councilor Fitzsimmons to do that where he sits on the library.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, last week, last week, wasn't it? We had a lunch meeting with the library board and the, uh, a couple of people from the mainland, and if you look in your package, you have, you should have a, uh, floor plan for, uh, what the library wants to look like. Uh, the problem is, right now, is the doors, the coming in and going out with the school and everything, and with COVID around now, really need, uh, its own entrance, exit, and, uh, it needs a washroom of its own. Right now, there's no washroom except for in the school, and of course, that's not, that's frowned upon right now, the public going into the washrooms at the school. So, this, this has been in the works for a while, actually, uh, we've been looking into this for three, four years, actually. And, uh, all that they would like to do is take money. Uh, last year, we had planned to, uh, replace the road that's in the library, and of course, with COVID and that, that never happened. So, what they'd like to do is take the money that we'd given them for that and put it into the study, uh, have this architect company come in and, uh, just review things and set out a plan, and, uh, we'll go from there, but there's no extra money needed or anything, we'd just like to reallocate the funds that they have from us.
So, you're making that a motion?
I would make that a motion, Mr. Mayor.
You heard the motion by Councilor Fitzsimmons, do we have a second there?
Call second, but Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I was thinking of just adding probably, but you had already said the money's already there. It's no, no money. Recreation Directors Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're just finalizing some of our, uh, kind of pre-winter maintenance on the ballfields. Every year we go around and, uh, re-fertilize and top up with some grass seeds on the outfields of, uh, Grand Harbor and Castilio. The new outdoor courts, we still have the nets up, the new courts, we're still getting a lot of use of the pickleball. Pickleball, still trying to play Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays outside. And a lot of days after school, we're getting a big number of kids up at the basketball court, so we're going to try to leave that up as long as we possibly can for them. But once we do finally take things down, I think we're going to end up having to lock the gate just to try to keep out any unwanted visitors. Uh, the rec staff went around and picked up all the garbage and recycle bins before Christmas, or before Halloween. Uh, we currently got them stored up by the pool. I think the first year with our new containers was a huge success. I know, uh, all the areas that we're working in the summertime, the amount of garbage that was left laying around by either the birds or critters was far less this year than, than other years, so I think those containers were well worth their weight in We now have two successful weeks under our belt with our reopening plans for the arena as well as the community center. So far, so good, things are going well, no major issues. I think the biggest thing is just everyone's trying to learn all the new rules that we've got in place when they come in. We knew it would take a little bit for everyone to get used to those, so we've been, we've been as lean as possible for the most part. I mean, obviously, everyone knows that the master mandatory, and it's been a hundred percent compliance with those. It's just some little things about some traffic control flow and stuff in the arena, which is hard to pick up on, but it's getting better all the time. Currently, the community center, phase one, basically has us open during the hours that the Boys and Girls Club is closed, which is basically evenings and weekends right now. We didn't put a timeline on moving from phase one to phase two, but I think in the very near future, we're going to want to move to phase two, which will allow us access to some of our morning time slots, which those morning time slots is basically for the seniors. It would allow the seniors to come in for their walking program as well as the, that seniors fitness class that we had with Change Fitness. So I think we'll review that within the next week or two to try to move that into the second phase. Phase two for the arena doesn't change things a whole lot. The one thing that it will do for us is allow, uh, more people in the facility. We have the minor hockey opening weekend fast approaching, uh, with the first home game scheduled for November the fourteenth. Currently, under phase one, we're only allowed to have one parent per player. This is causing a bit of a issue with parents, uh, multi-parents within the same family as well as parents that have, uh, multiple children. It's, uh, finding it hard for parents to come in and leave other kids with babysitters and stuff, so. Anyway, once we move into our second phase, again, we don't have any timeline on that, but I think once we get our opening weekend under our belt, let's see how that's going to go, because some of the few things that we've got to do is the contact tracing, because we're having teams come from the mainland. Uh, none of the teams are allowed into the building until fifteen minutes prior to their ice time. The players will give access at fifteen minutes, but once the players are in the building, and then the parents will have to be screened as they come in. The players are going to all be pre-screened beforehand. Uh, Minor Hockey is working with, uh, the teams from away. We have a streamlined protocol where the team, the managers for each teams are going to look after pre-screening all the players, and then once the players get in, like I said, they, uh, they'll bring the parents in one at a time. So hopefully, that'll go well, but hopefully, once we get moved into that second phase, it'll allow us a few more people in the building. I mean, currently, right now, we're not restricted, but I think everyone just wanted to see how things were going to go under all the new rules before everything opened up, so it'll take a little bit of getting used to, but so far, so good. The Silco Playground seems like it's making some pretty good strides in their fundraising. I know there's been a lot of successful ones going on. There's been a couple draws here taking place at the village for some of their fundraisers, and, uh, Alyssa's been helping out with selling tickets here at the office. Seems like they're doing quite well with raising some money. We actually have a meeting this Friday down at, uh, the Silco Beach on the property with, uh, with one of the reps from the, uh, from JIL Engineering. That's the company that we use for the playground installations. He's going to come from Fredericton on Friday to meet with the Silco Playground Group, just to kind of take a look at the location and, uh, see what he thinks. I think it's since been, uh, been surveyed, I think, has it?
See the sticks up there.
A better idea of what's actually belongs to the village, to give them a better idea of what amount of room they're going to actually have, because with the CSA standards, like for things with swings and stuff, you have the amount of room that the swings need, but you also have the encroachment zones, which is the buffer around the swings, so some kid swinging on the, on the swings doesn't kick some other kid in the head, and so it's, make sure you have enough room there. A bit of an odd, odd, of my report, I was approached back in the spring by, uh, by DNR. I guess my, my background in, in, uh, in fish brought them to me, but they were looking to see if I'd be interested in help to facilitate the, the local restocking program. So after some talks with them, and we realized, after talking with some of the camp owners, that due to the extreme dry conditions we had this summer, that it was best to try to put it off as long as we could. A lot of the camp owners were reporting historic lows in water levels as well as some algae sightings, so we didn't think it would be worth risking the fish to bring them over. Uh, DNR agreed to hold off as long as they could, so on October the sixteenth, uh, the rec department, along with, uh, some various camp owner volunteers, spent, uh, the afternoon restocking nine local ponds with approximately forty-three hundred trout. Due to the hatchery closures and disease issues, uh, it had been five years since the, the last restocking here locally. And it would only seem fit to talk about the restocking program, to, uh, to mention the hard work and the dedication over the years put into that program by Sheldon Frost. I'm sure Sheldon would be proud to know that that program has life once again. That is my report, any questions?
How many fish did you say, Chris?
Forty-three hundred.
That's huge, that's usually, well, twice as much as usual, so.
In nine ponds, locally, one, eight local and one over on Whitehead.
Okay. And, uh, how long's been, is it four years since they did the last?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
I knew it's been a while.
Five years, the, the province lost their hatchery, and, uh, they tried, uh, subletting, and, uh, that didn't work either, disease issues, but now they've found another decent source, so when I was talking to them, they, as of right now, their plan is to make this an annual thing again.
Good.
So.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Just one more thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Mayor. How big are the trout?
The trout were ninety-four grams.
Okay, quarter of a pound, roughly.
They were roughly eight or ten inches.
Eight or ten inches, yeah, okay.
Gee, good size. Approval to pay the following invoices, fourteen one is the General Operator Reading Fund. Fire Department, two thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
How much motion to pay that, Mr. Mayor?
Heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon, do we have a second there?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by Councilor Fitzsimmons. Question.
Can anyone tell me what AEMTS stands for? The Equitable?
Hmm?
You want to pay a portion of that out of the, out of budget, Rob?
Not, not the fire.
Yeah, that's next.
Yes, the next one down.
No, we wanted to split the bill on top of that under General Operating Fund. It would be an issue. You were going to split that bill so they have to make the motion with this one?
Yeah.
So what are we doing?
So you're ignoring my question and?
That's what he refers, the five, twenty-two forty-two, that's still.
What he wanted to know was what AEMTS means.
Atlantic Emergency Medical Training Solutions, and it's for stock fleet kits for the fire department.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried now. So we're going to the General Capital Fund. Englobe Asset Management, three thousand and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Fund Defencing, Pickleball Basketball Courts, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. Silk Stevens Pickleball, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cent, seventy-five cents. Dutchman Contracting, payment, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Did we, are we missing something, Mayor?
Yes, we are, um.
Maybe we should sort that out.
Yeah, I thought Rob was going to speak on that. They weren't going to pay the total, uh, Fund Defencing bill, and they were going to split it between the General Operating and the General Capital.
There are going, going to be a holdback on that. We're getting a fifteen percent holdback on it, because they're fixing the posts that are put in. Yeah, that's, that's got to come into this conversation here now, on that particular invoice. Okay. And then, uh, what is left, uh, of the, with like twenty thousand dollars of that to come under the General Capital Fund, and then the rest come out of the, uh, the gas tax. Is up.
You told me this morning, it was going to come out of the General Operating Fund, the twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And then the rest minus the fifteen percent was going to come out of the General Capital.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then.
So, on this one here, what we want to do is make a motion for twenty thousand dollars from Fund Defencing under the General.
General Operating Fund.
So we won't deal with those other ones yet, we'll deal with this one first.
Okay.
Under the General Operating Fund, Fund Defencing, twenty thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion, yes.
Heard the motion by Councilor Fitzsimmons, do we have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon. Question.
Can I just ask why we're splitting the invoice? The bill up to is over because of the seamless fencing, so we have to take some out of our cut, our budget.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, the General Operating, General Capital Fund. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Englobe Asset Management, three thousand and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-seven, thirty-eight cents. Fund Defencing, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Six thousand. Six thousand and sixteen.
Six thousand, excuse me, there, there's a line here in front of it.
The dollar sign.
Fund Defencing, six thousand, seven hundred?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred and twenty-six, twenty-one. Silk Stevens, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Dutchman Contracting, one thousand, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to pay them out of the General Capital Fund?
Heard the motion by Councilor Fitzsimmons, do we have a second there?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Morris. Question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on the Fund Defencing, you're splitting it up. Uh, I see from the quotation of the twenty-seven, five, six, four in the HST, that brings it up to thirty-one, six, seven, seven, ninety, which you've then split, but also when they're asking for a fifteen percent, fifteen percent holdback, check the math, because I don't believe that the four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, ninety cents is quite right, it's more like four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Forty-one, thirty-one, ninety, plus HST. Gives you forty-seven, fifty-one, sixty-nine.
Excellent.
That's why I should have the term. Good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Transfers requiring a motion. Transfer of three thousand and twenty-seven dollars. Transfer three thousand and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents from the gas tax fund to the General Operating Fund. Can we do this all in one motion?
Well, it's going from, all going from gas tax to general capitals.
Transfer six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents from the General Capital and the transfer three thousand six hun- three thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents from the Ca- General Capital and transfer one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and twenty di- twenty-five dollars from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund.
So moved.
Heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Moses. Do we have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Cheney. Question?
They're all coming from the gas tax fund into the capital, General Capital Fund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, sixteen is closed session. We're going in for a legal arbitration and, uh, financial community planning. You have a motion?
I would move to adjourn to closed session.
Heard the motion by Councilor Morris. Do we have a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Worthing. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.